Welcome to today's city council meeting, Monday, September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Here.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silveira, absent. Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand for the invocation by Pastor Jim Stachow, then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. He is with us via Zoom.
Good evening. Thanks for welcoming me to pray. Let's do that. Gracious and loving God, watch over all human endeavors, supplier of all our needs. We thank you for your many and abundant blessings. How wonderful it is to be alive at this time and in this place. How marvelous to live in such a vibrant community with friends and family. For the awesome beauty and spellbinding wonder of nature, we give you humble thanks. We also give you thanks that we can participate in meetings like this council meeting. You are attentive, oh, God, to the many and complex issues and challenges that face us. So we pray for our mayor and this assembled council and for the many city workers charged with carrying out policies. Grant them wisdom and guidance and compassion and creativity. But we pray your blessing upon the deliberations and decisions made here tonight. That they may be just and good. To that end, we pray that you would grant each person here, listening ear, clarity of speech, a passion for justice, wisdom, courage, and joy. We pray for the agenda set before us tonight. May what is said and done here please you and benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Series. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic, in its nation, without division, liberty, and justice for all.
We will now move on to presentations. Today, we have a presentation for the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. With us today is Nelson Gomez from South Modesto Business United, who will be accepting the proclamation. Mr. Gomez. Welcome, everyone. Clearing September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Hispanic Heritage, National Hispanic Heritage Month, known as Mas de Hispana Hispana, is celebrated nationwide September fifteenth, October fifteenth each year. The observation started in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover the month at which it is celebrated today, September fifteenth. Is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence of Latin American countries. Costa Rica, Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, in addition to Mexico and Chile, celebrate their Independence Day on September sixteenth and eighteenth, respectively. And Latinos are individuals that are descendants from Latin American countries and may speak a variety of different languages. Hispanics are individuals that speak Spanish and are descendants from Spanish-speaking countries, including Spain, and understanding that Hispanics are extremely entrepreneurial and play a vital role in our economy and workplace. And the City of Series recognizes the significant contributions they have made. And whereas the City of Series is committed to recognizing the Hispanic Latino culture and heritage as an important part of the city and its strong inclusive community. Now, therefore, I, Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Sivera, Councilmember James Casey, and Councilmember Rosalinda Vera, and also Daniel Martinez here proclaim today, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Series. Thank you very much, everyone. Round of applause. And also, if I would like to have the council come up here, take a quick little photo, if you guys don't mind. In addition, we do have Destiny Swar is also here from presenting Senator Marie Alvarado Gil's office. She also has a certificate to give to the City of Series. If you could please come up here and photo, and then we'll go from there. Thank you. So we'll have Nelson make some comments, then we'll have Destiny make some comments as well, if you don't mind, Destiny.
Mister Mayor and the council, I want to thank you on behalf of South Modesto Businesses United for the great honor you've done and given us this proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. It's a very important month for the community, series and surrounding in the fact that there is a lot of from many countries, as you've read in the prosection. And so we're very proud to be Americans, and we have a heritage of Hispanic heritage, but we are happy to know the City of Series recognizes Hispanics in our community. I want to thank you and the City Council members and anyone else that attended the Mexican Independence Day celebration that we had on September fifteenth at Ramadito. It was a success. I thank you for your presence. Thank you for participating with us in this particular celebration. Again, I want to take this time to just say thank you for recognizing us. This is a very special occasion. Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. Thank you very much. Destiny, welcome.
Hi, good evening, everybody. On behalf of California State Senate, it is a great honor to recognize this series of information for fifteen, October fifteenth, National Hispanic Heritage. Thank you for recognizing the important contribution of Hispanic Americans to our community, state of California, and our nation as a whole. This is a great opportunity for our community to honor, reflect.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Destiny. Okay. Moving. Our second presentation is from Stan Cog. And today we have our Director of Remobility Program, Jean Foleta. How are you doing today?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lopez, and hello to the Series Council. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the unmet transit needs kickoff of the transit need process. There we go. Thank you. So the the unmet transit needs process is a regulation required by the Transportation Development Act. And annually, it requires that we go out and we do this unmet transit needs process, which is what we're just beginning right now. The requirement of the unmet transit need, as you can see on the slide here, is one public hearing, outreach, and then determine if there are any transit needs that are reasonable to meet, then we prepare a report. So this slide shows you the schedule of the transit needs. And right now, we're in the outreach process. So that's why I'm here. We want to talk to you about the process, make sure that all the jurisdictions know that's going on. Because this is the opportunity for people in your region or in your city to tell us if they do have any unmet transit needs that they feel that's reasonable. Are there any transportation concerns? And this is the time that they can do that, and then we'll, and I'll show you the way that we go about doing this, and it goes into a report that ultimately sort of dictates this transportation funding throughout or transit funding throughout the county. There is a lot of outreach. We, as I said, we have to have one public hearing. Stan Cog will be having that public hearing on November fourteenth. And then what we do is we take all the comments that we have received, and we evaluate them and then make a recommendation whether or not they're reasonable to meet. Then again, draft this report. The report has to be up on our website for thirty days for the public to comment on it again. So again, the public throughout the process has the opportunity to make their voices heard if they have any concerns with their transportation. This year, what we wanted to do was do a team approach in our outreach to maximize the effort. This is the first time, I believe, that's done in the region. So we're partnering with Move Stanislaus. They do a lot of work with the senior and disabled populations. We're working with Stan RTA and Turlock Transit to get the word out about the unmet treat needs process as well as going to these various councils to present. We will be doing pop-up events at the transit hubs. It's really important that we get to the grassroots of folks that are actually using the service. So we go out there, have little goodies, and if they do the survey, then they get some sort of swag, whatever we have at that point. And then additionally, we have the Move folks that do travel training, which means they go out on the bus with individuals and teach them how to ride the bus. And they'll be handing out these flyers that I'll show you in just a moment as they do their training. This is the flyer that we have this year, and you can see on there, there's a little guy with a QR code. And by the way, these flyers are in English and in Spanish. And the QR code takes you directly to a survey, and that's the meat of what we want to get to is have people go take this little survey, and they can add comments on there if they would like. We also are going to, so we're distributing the QR codes or the little flyers at these outreach events. They're posted on the transit buses, social media, and the like. The neat thing, we've used this last year at the transit hubs, and especially for students, high school students, and the people that can go really quick on their phones. They get that thing, and they're done with their survey within like a couple of seconds. Maybe it would take ten minutes, but they love it when we got a really great, really great feedback using this QR code. So what is next? What happens after we get all these comments from people? We take the comments and we compile them, as I said. Then we're going to establish if any of them are reasonable to me. After that, we prepare a report, and that report goes to our policy board for approval. And then finally, the funds, the Transportation Development Act funds are distributed based based on what we get throughout this unmet transit need process. So what is an unmet transit need definition? And I'm not free the definition to you, but I will tell you an example I use all the time about reasonable to me. People will give us comments. They may say that they need a bus to go out to Series High, things like that. A lot of times, the comments are just somebody that simply doesn't know the bus route services. And if that be the case, like we have a service that's taking them to Series High, we would have the transit operator call them. But sometimes we get comments like, I want to go to Disneyland on Sundays. Every, I've been doing this for a long time, and every jurisdiction, we get a crazy comment like that. That is not a reasonable meat comment that is reasonable. But one that we had years and years ago was for the senior population. And they, there was a group of seniors that came together and were advocating for door through doors transit service for folks that were inbound, housebound. And from that, there was a volunteer driver program started. I actually started that program and started the program that's now known as Move. And Move came about because it was determined that it was an unmet transit need that was reasonable. So that is the presentation, short and sweet, and we'd be happy to answer any questions if there are.
Thank you, Jean. Does anybody have any question in the audience? Any hands raised on Zoom?
There are a couple of hands raised. I'm not sure they're related to the presentation. We'll start with
type of stuff is that? Gotta be kidding me. That's the first in my entire time I've been here at the city council. He's gone. Next person? All right, there you go. You can tell that all those next people are going to be, yeah, all of those people. So at this moment, because of the fact that we were receiving public comment from Zoom, I will not allow any further comments from Zoom. So we're going to move on. Okay, you guys, you're lucky that you are on Zoom, because if you were here present, that would have never happened. So, okay. Sorry about those hands raised. Not gonna happen. Moving on from that. Ridiculous. These are clowns. Jean, thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the council, the Jean? Okay, Rosalinda, go ahead. She has a question for you.
I apologize. I guess my only question is, is it possible for you to email the flyer, or is it available online so we can share it with her?
Yes, I will send it to the clerk and then, or if there's somebody else that whoever I could be descended, I can.
I'm guessing Fallen or Tina, and then they can make sure the council gets it all, and then we share it. That would be wonderful. Perfect. I'd love to get that out to the community.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosa. Let me just refocus here, because I'm still thinking about those comments. Thank you, Jean. Okay, we're going to move on to citizens communication. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution two thousand and seven, one oh six, for expressions of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not posted on the agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits city council from taking any actions on any matters which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be in emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. And when anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to make a comment? Yes, ma'am. And please state your name.
I was here to go about the yard sales.
Okay.
Not sure what I'm supposed to do for however. Like to go around to the neighborhood and if I can get a petition signed.
And you said it's for the yard sales?
Yeah.
Oh, is this, is this a follow-up from, did you guys hear about what we talked about last time? City manager?
Or four times a year, instead of two?
Yeah, so that's going to be coming back on referral on the next council meetings we talked about, and if the council approves that, then we'll bring it back as a staff report on October twenty-third, sir.
So, so normally, yes, so there's a referral that we had made a recommendation for referral from Councilmember Vera, and that will be coming to council. And then there's this additional step from that, but nothing's stopping you from getting petitions from the public and in support of having more additional yard sales throughout the community. So that is a big yes.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you very much. No, you're fine. Is there anybody else? Okay. Is there any emails? We're not going to Zoom. I'm sorry. And who is it? Oh, Jean Yeakley, just because I know your name, sir, but we're going to allow you. If I don't recognize the name, I'm not going to allow. I can't choose. You want to call them all to speak? Well, I mean, I'm, well, then I'm Nubia. Nubia, is Nubia, are you on?
Yeah, Mayor, can you hear me?
Okay, in light of that situation, I want to motion that we do not allow public comment because of the comments that have been made. Is that, is that something that I can motion, or would you rather just continue on and clicking these buttons and allowing people to say these disparaging comments? Because obviously, they're violations of decorum. Those last two people that went on.
My, my recommendation is that based off of the series of comments that you've received, you turn off the the comment function for now and and make sure that it's limited to comments that are are present. Again, the alternative is to open it up, but then you'd have to, you have to let everyone speak.
Okay. That's fine. Okay, so so Nubia, just to reiterate, you're, I'm not going to allow anybody to comment, or do we have to?
Because of the breach of decorum, you, as chair, have the discretion to to shut off the comments. Yeah.
Okay, so, so that is, that is, that is my case. So we will not allow public comment from Zoom. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. And just to make sure, anybody else in the public, public has any additional comments before I move on, Mr. Warren? Anybody? No? Okay. Okay, public period is now closed. Is there any conflict of interest? The council members? Seeing none. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar consider routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be enacted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like an item pool for further discussion? Rosalinda Vera, your button has been pressed. You have the floor?
Yes, I'd like to push number, uh, pull number eight, please.
Number eight. Mister Casey, you have the floor?
Six and seven.
Six and seven. Anyone from the public that would like to consent item pool for further discussion? Besides six, seven, and eight? Seeing none. Bring this back to council for motion.
Make a motion that we approve items one through five on the consent calendar.
Second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Item number six. Awarding the design contract for HIPS L five two four one zero seven six median installations and HSIP SL dash fifty-two forty-one zero seventy-seven traffic signal improvement projects for the TL Engineering, authorizing the city manager to execute the contract, and this is for you, Mister Casey.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I remember six, I noticed, I noticed in the detail limited public input. I had opportunities to speak to our intern city manager, and unfortunately, I didn't get an answer, and I didn't, I failed to ask the answer before the meeting started. But it clearly states and indicates in that resolution that there's little or no public input. Particularly when it comes to the area dealing with Garrison and Dale Road. That's the reason I asked it be pulled.
City manager, is that, are you going to answer that question?
I'm sorry, I was talking.
Yeah, I could answer that question.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Councilmember Casey, the project understanding plan three A, as part of the TL proposal includes full section, public hearing under task two. Three A. It is the same under task two, so the activities that will be requested from the consultant will be to perform public care on both the median work on Mitchell as well as the the work on Whitmore. We will conduct public hearings according to proper protocol.
So on page twenty of twenty TL engineering, it shows about the timeframe, October twenty-third through April twenty-fourth. And it's public outreach. You know, it shows none. That, that's what was confusing to me. And it, you know, and in my, my limited time being a council person, I recognize that oftentimes, we make an assumption about Facebook and media coverage and that the public ought to understand what's going on. But in this particular case, you know, since it involves restricting traffic and and there's only a few homes involved, I just want to make sure that those people that live on Garrison and Dale have have the ability to have at least their concerns heard.
Understood. This is an anticipated project scheduled developed by the consultant. It is an approved schedule approved by the city, so I will make sure that that will be provided, and I'll give council when this is going to happen, and we will form the public as to a proper period before the actual public hearing for everybody to participate.
Mister Casey, any further questions?
No.
Okay. Bring this to anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on item number six. Bring this back to council for motion.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Uh, maybe just reannounce that we're not taking any comment on Zoom in case anyone legitimately has a raise for a comment.
Just so everybody knows on Zoom that we are not accepting any more Zoom comments in light of the decorum violations, so everybody knows. Thank you. Bring this back.
Move to approve item number six of the consent calendar.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
No.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passes three, one.
Mister Casey, you also have item number seven. The floor is yours.
Sure, thank you, Mister Mayor. I understood that this type of transaction didn't require actual bidding. And I also understand that we presently have Verizon and their bill is greater than what eMobile is presenting. But in this report, I don't see where we reached out to Verizon, AT&amp;T. I don't see where we reached out to Verizon, A T and T. For. I guess uh, a bid or proposal. I understand that uh, the assumption is that they would have been higher anyway. Really, I think we should reach out to them.
Councilmember Casey, uh, we did reach out to Verizon. This, they declined to. Effectively said.
I, I understand that, but did you also reach out to A T and T?
We actually did not reach out to A T and T. Asked issues that we.
Sure, and I understand that as well, because where, excuse me, because where I work. Uh, when people make a decision, sometimes they don't want to go to a previous bad experience. But that bad experience might have just been particular in the circumstances. And I think city. Deserve the right to at least reach out to them. That's the reason I wanted it. Thank you.
Frederick, I have a question since we're opening up this item. Out of all, out of all the three vendors, Verizon, T-Mobile, and A T and T. Who has the best coverage?
It depends. It depends on the area. Um, there is no best. Have issues with Verizon and Turlock and Oakdale. T-Mobile is weaker in Waterford. It just depends. Here in Series, we did run some testing.
I was gonna ask.
Coverage is quite good in Series.
For T-Mobile?
With T-Mobile is quite a bit faster.
Do you know, and this, I don't think you'll know this question, uh, the answer to this question, do you know how many cell towers of T-Mobile we have here?
I don't know that, however, uh, we have good contacts with T-Mobile if you want that. And they are open to input from the city about air or coverage where they need it. Um, they have let us know they are deploying a tower at Waterford in October.
Okay. I personally would not support A T and T for the lack of services that they provide as a fire technician. I, I maintain, we had a contract with Verizon Business, T-Mobile, and A T and T. And Verizon Business had most towers throughout Northern California, Southern California. And I've just have had the best experience with Verizon, but if they didn't want to come to the table and try to save us money, I could imagine why you, you took this route. Additional comments?
You were preparing to explain some of the issues you have with A T and T, would you mind elaborating on that?
Uh, we had an issue with the patrol car back when we ran A T and T, where we ended up with patrol cars out of service for. Because they couldn't activate. Us. We spent. One hundred and eighty technician hours on the phone.
Thank you, sir.
So just looking at this, I mean, one would think that we're, we're only talking about cell service, but we're talking about service for our patrol cars. And that's crucial. You would say? Yeah. In light of that, I would not support A T and T in that aspect. Now, T-Mobile, now, how would the transition look like when we trans, because I know that you're probably gonna, I'm probably gonna be in that room for about an hour. At least for my cellphone service, but.
Yeah, uh, T-Mobile is offering to switch everyone out to a brand-new iPhone thirteen if they want. And they will send a team onsite for free to help with the technical portion of changing out the SIM cards for them.
So they asked, okay. It's the only questions I have. Anybody else? Um, yes, we're gonna go back to the public and just want to make sure nobody here at the council had any questions. Anybody from the public have any comments or questions? So Warren?
John Warren, City of Series. Um, in regards to switching, is the patrol car issue the only issue that we have?
We have one patrol car currently on T-Mobile and have had no issues with it in the City of Series or any of the areas they patrol in.
What about the rest of the city?
That's the city.
Rest of the, you're switching to T-Mobile just for the patrol car?
No, it would be, it would be citywide, the savings.
So my question is, what kind of issue are we having a problem with, with the entire city? Patrol cars separate issue with one part of this whole city. Okay, we don't have any. Cell service and. Internets at some of the city buildings with going to T-Mobile, will we have cell service and. Internet service at all the city buildings?
Uh, T-Mobile does provide fixed five G service and they have offered that to the city at, I believe it's fifty dollars a month, which is significantly less. So that is something we could look into and extend network coverage to other facilities.
Yes or no, will we have? Internet service at all the city buildings?
That's not part of the project.
And we're just talking about cell phone, cellphone service, right?
It's just the, the city staff cell phones.
And the patrol cars have wireless features, so we're not talking about Wi-Fi in the buildings, I think. That was a great question, Mr. Warren.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Anybody else have a commoner question? Okay, I bring this back to the council for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve consent item seven.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vieira?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries three, one.
Moving on to item number eight, approving the use of ARPA funds for the budget amendment to support the service of retirement award program. This goes to Ms. Vasquez.
So when it comes to number eight.
So, um, you, why actually, go ahead, my apologies. I was thinking that she was gonna say something, but no, you're totally right. Go ahead, Rosalinda, you are the one who pulled it. I need more coffee, go ahead.
Alright.
Mics are hot, don't forget.
I guess with number eight, I guess I do have a few concerns, because it's not that I don't feel the employees don't deserve it. I know with a lot of changes and stuff, I know a lot, we're down to the bare minimum in staffing. And I'm sure we probably need additional staffing needs, which we've talked about in previous council meetings. And I know there's, looks like some employees may be working out of their skill set, um, and I don't want to compromise that ability. However, I do think there are some higher priorities, um, such as some of our potholes, our sidewalks, and we just talked about at last council meeting about sidewalks. Continuing some of that done. Um, traffic has been coming up within the city. Uh, Whitmore Mansion, I know I had mentioned this when we were having the budget discussion, I was told I was gonna have something soon. And I guess my idea of soon is a little different than others. Um, and then also the water tower, that's come up a couple times, I don't know how much money was raised, what the difference is between what the actual estimate was and foreclosed, and if this amount is even something that could bridge the gap. Um, so I guess those are kind of my concerns regarding our priorities, and, and it's not that I don't think the employees don't deserve it. Um, I just think when we're in tough times and we're having to do a lot of cuts and restrictions, I think we just need to make sure we're making wise decisions with the money allocations that we have left, which I believe this was all that we have left. Those are my concerns regarding that.
City manager, is that all we have left?
I'll let Delilah respond to the question.
Well, that is my understanding that that's the remaining of the second installment, but we still have other funding that can be used for other projects. But this was the last that was remaining of that one, or the second installment. And I'd just like to add that, you know, I recognize that there are a lot of, um, competing priorities, but I do believe that the employees dedicated in service, that we should be able to. Recognize them when they put in twenty years of service, twenty-five years of dedicated service, and being able to give them a plaque is not a whole lot, but it's something to show our, our appreciation for their commitment and service. So I hope you'll consider that.
Thank you. Mr. Casey, you have the floor.
I, I agree that we need some sort of recognition, dedication, employees that stay here beyond a few months, a few years. But I'm, I'm having trouble, this is kind of after the fact, this ARPA fund money that we had close to a million dollars. So much of it was used in. Budget items that are reoccurring, and, and that's my, my drawback to this. Uh, I think that maybe when we propose our budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, we can add it in. I think it's an important part of with management of people, showing appreciation for those that do things. But I, I think we need to take a stand on spending the ARPA money on things that are going to be reoccurring, so. That's why I would, would against it.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Anyone from the public would like to make a comment? Mr. Warren, please step up.
John Warren, City of Series, my question here, because unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to have notes. What are you talking about? How much money?
Was roughly ten?
Thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
Ten thousand? In relation to that, when this ten thousand dollars is gone, and I do future. They're current, people in you. And uh, I know it's not a large amount, ten thousand dollars, but ARPA funds were supposed to be used for things. That were emergencies, could be taken care of any other way. This is supposed to be, be occurring thing. And I understand people retiring, people serving twenty years, reaching a goal of twenty-five years. Are important steps, because there is a program, state service, I was involved in, and twenty-five years you were recognized. Safety award. Safe driving, you are right. But funds came from a different source, it didn't come from ARPA money, which is a one. I think, Mr. Casey is on the right track. This should be a budget item, and money should be found to be used on a continued basis.
Mr. Warren, I, I think that Delilah, you might be reading my mind, this is actually going to, it says here for the next three years.
This will help us in the next three years, and my intent is to roll it in moving forward into the budget. And it'll give me a good indication of how much funding we need to support this moving forward, and it's something we do definitely, hopefully.
Mr. Warren, you are correct, that, that is very important that we don't just do it one time, though being that it is for the next three years, that's one of the reasons I, I will, I will support it. Is there any additional comments or questions from the public? I bring this back to the council for motion.
Make a motion that we approve item A to the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vieira?
No.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion fails. Two, two.
Moving on. Moving on to unfinished business. Waiver of the second reading and adoption of ordinance, amending chapter ten mobile food vending from mortar vehicles of title five. Business license regulations of the Series Municipal Code to amend regulations related to food trucks. Uh, Community Developer Director Christopher Home will present the item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this will be very brief. Add two committee meetings at the direction of the city council and receive feedback at those two committee meetings. With that feedback, staff is now recommending that. It's item B. Time to prepare. New item to be, uh, be brought forward to the council. We're looking probably at October.
Okay. I will go ahead and open this item up to the public. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none. I bring this back now to the council, I know that there's some committee members here present that obviously would like to make comment in regards to this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, myself and Councilmember Vieira are a part of this committee. Uh, I have the honor of chairing both of those meetings. Along with us was the South Medesto Business United President Nelson Gomez, uh, Chamber President Brandy Meyer, and Latino Chamber of Commerce President, uh, Johnny Garcia. Sorry, I always make sure I fix, I get his name correct. Uh, we had two different meetings, we had citizen involvement, uh, in both. Not the amount of citizen involvement that I think myself or Councilmember Vieira would have liked to have seen, but nevertheless, we had people come up and express to us what they would like. Uh, we made the ordinance a little bit more sensible, we, we made it more realistic, we made it, uh, scaled down to something that the city can support, and I think. When it comes back to the council and we read it, uh, it'll look better and it'll be received by everyone a lot greater this time around, so. I'm looking forward to it being brought back and being presented and, and getting input from everyone on the council.
Mr. Vieira, any?
I really have to concur with, um. Yeah, no, I think there was just one outstanding question I had, which I could address offline, um, regarding the billing issue. But other than that, I think it is definitely a reasonable ordinance that we had worked on, going through pretty much all the different topics and addressing. Just even being able to control and monitor and try to. Make sure it was reasonable and not interfering with even the current businesses that we have now, but whilst still inviting other people to the area. We making a variety of. Mobile food vendors that maybe we don't even have a brick and mortar for, so I look forward to seeing what it has and when it comes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, council members, for taking on that task. I myself am really proud of the work that you have done, both of you, and also the other members that were in that committee. The reason why I brought this forward was I felt that it was time, and I knew, that's why the motion was also referencing having this committee, because I knew that there was more talks to be had. So, thank you to everyone, including the public, for showing up and giving your input. Christopher, I appreciate all the hard work that you've been working on this for several months. Well, thank you very much. And with that.
Mayor, one more thing, the committee does plan on continuing to meet, and we will be addressing additional items, including sidewalk vending, uh, pushcart vendors, and, and other issues that the city has. And I believe the plan is to keep the same five individuals on it as we move forward and, and find sensible ways to make ordinances and bring it to the council.
Love it, I really do appreciate it. Once again, so with that being said. Motion. Motion to deny.
Uh, I'll make a motion to deny the second reading.
I'll second your denial.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vieira?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Is, uh, failed four zero.
Okay, thank you. There is no public hearing, no new business, but we do have a discussion item. Item number ten, River Road Mutual Water Company request for water service. Señor Royal?
Good evening, good evening, council. Uh, I would like to present to you tonight, uh, this item in regarding to River Road Mutual Water Company request for the water service connection. Um, I want to give you some of the backgrounds. Over the course of the past several months, staff, staff has met with the ownership and operators of the River Road Mutual Water System. In terms of finding a long-term and cost-effective solution to the water quality problems faced by the owners and, uh, of aged homes. The eight properties are located both in the City of Series and incorporated San Luis Obispo County, on the north side of River Road and on both. Side of Mitchell Road before Mitchell Bridge. Only five homes, um, those on Mitchell Road are annexed into the City of Series. Existing water, what, existing water well currently serving the eight properties are, is approximately seventy feet deep and constructed in nineteen sixty-seven. The well is located within the flood zone of Tuolumne River. Due to its location, the well is believed to be groundwatered under the direct influence of, uh, surface water since nineteen ninety-seven flood. The well has been, uh, suffering with, uh, on and off bacterial ecological contamination. Uh, despite multiple efforts, uh, of, and of, to eliminate, uh, the bacterial presence in the well and distribution system. Total, uh, coliform bacteria continued to be detected in the distribution system and the well itself. In August twenty twenty-two, due to the unresolved and ongoing bacterial ecological water quality issues. Environmental Health, uh, directed agencies to provide the user, uh, with boiled water notices. Install an emergency chlorination system and collect additional bacterial, but bacteria, bacterial logical sampling from the well and distribution system, uh, on a monthly basis. In January twenty twenty-three, environmental health directed agencies to confirm with the current president that boiling water remained in place. And to address, uh, the elevated risk of contamination due to twenty twenty-three Tuolumne River high water event. The River Road Mutual Water System will be a single master uh meter consolidation. The connection is to to provide the meter uh to to provide to provide a water system which will be responsible for operating and maintaining the infrastructure within uh its own boundaries. For this type of a project, a water service agreement must be made between the owners of the entity and the city of Series. The construction of the connection to the water to the city of Series will be paid by the River uh Road Mutual Water System. Staff is in support of the of the connection to the water system. The city water remains uh through uh the the city water uh main runs through uh River Road. Connection uh would not cause any changes to the city water system. Lastly, uh, should the city council approve uh, should the city council uh give staff directions to move forward? With the connection, staff will negotiate a water service agreement, establish a fee rate structure consist uh consistent with the city of uh with the city existing rate and development and develop an MOU. Uh, this item will be back uh to council for formal adoption by resolution once all items above have been completed.
Thank you very much. I now bring this to anybody in the council chambers who would like to make a comment on this item. Seeing none. I bring this back to the council for any comments. Okay, so um me and Sam had a conversation offline, and I just wanted to show a show a to respects to ex-mayor Vera who sent me an email, and we talked about these these items. That, as you mentioned, there is going to be one meter, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
So that one meter?
Yeah, one meter will be serviced. Uh, it'll be the main meter to to all eight properties.
Okay, and obviously in this agreement, there there will be seen some uh conversations about what the rates will be, and those rates will coincide with what the city of Series residents currently pay now, correct?
That that is correct, yes, sir.
And in addition to that, if there is a rate increase, obviously that will also be in that agreement as if uh
They'll definitely be impacted, yes, sir.
Okay, and as as far as the installation of those lines, once we make connection and any repairs or installation that will be done by their contractors and not the city of Series?
Correct, yes, sir.
And those are some of the questions that Mayor Vera uh had expressed to me and Vice Mayor Brett Silveira. So I think with with that, unless there's any other discussions from the council in regards to those couple items, you're looking for a direction today, sir, correct? To move forward with an agreement?
Yes, Mayor.
And then bring it back to the city council?
Absolutely.
Okay. And there is actually, there is no motion required. It's more it's more like consensus.
Correct.
Okay, uh, and with that, uh, council members, it actually, Rosa Linda, you have your, the floor is yours. I wasn't sure. Was that pressed before I started talking?
No.
I just wanted to make sure. I don't want to start.
You you had mentioned something that caught my attention.
Sure.
Just the one meter for eight properties. So is their current existing service going to be charging the River Road Mutual Water Company, going to be responsible for then charging each home? Is that what these?
They'll be on 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 the uh uh on the agency to to figure out exactly how these each individual homes would would have the water uh used. But for our purposes, uh, we have one meter uh that we would go ahead and charge uh the eight the eight residents.
Good. Okay, Mr. Casey, go ahead, sir. Floor is yours. Microphone on, sir. Microphone on.
Turn on the mic. Mic turn. Uh, in in the the data that we have, uh, that on page three, uh, it 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 just lists the one River Road address nine, three, five. But the map that we have, uh, it's, I think it's the last attachment B. It is the property that we're talk, I mean, the homes that we're talking about, the ones that are shaded. The the addresses on Mitchell Road, and then it shows actually three different residents on River Road. Uh, it's just confusing to me. And and also that the the homes on Mitchell, if this dotted red line is our city limits, they're already in the city of Series, but they're not getting city water?
It's it seems like they were connected to that well, uh, Mr. Casey. The five res, the five properties on Mitchell are are annexed. Uh, those are uh annexed to the city, and they're they're on the same uh distribution line.
So when they were annexed, they weren't brought into the?
They were not, didn't ask for uh any water uh connection at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Well, then you just need direction from the council to move forward with an agreement, sir, right?
Yes, once 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 uh council gives me the direction, we'll go ahead and uh draft the uh drafted resolution, draft the agreement, uh, the MOU, and then bring it back to council for uh adoption.
Okay, and is the council okay with that left to right?
We need a motion.
No, just this is just giving them direction. Okay, there you go, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, is there any council member referrals?
Mr. Mayor, I I want to just remind everybody that uh this Saturday, the uh walk in Crusade Park for the suicide thing. And and I think uh it's it's important for those people that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you very much. Is there any council member referrals? No? Okay. I have nothing to report. City council, do you have anything to report? Okay. Rosa Linda, since you're always the longest reports, we'll have you go first. I'm always excited.
So dealing with the economic development, um, we have a meeting tomorrow with Stennisless Equity Partners and Stennisless County Workforce Development. They're hosting a workshop tomorrow for business owners at the Weave Building at eight twenty eighth street in Modesto. It is a free event from five thirty to seven thirty to just kind of get an idea where businesses are. I've been going door to door here locally to our businesses. I'm just trying to get a feel of where they're at and how they're feeling, so. I'm still going to continue to do that, and if business owners still want to reach out or have questions, I am happy to connect them with usually Christopher and Doug and try to get those issues or concerns or whatever they want to do addressed. Um, and regardless to our homeless or unsheltered, I've met with the downtown street team in Modesto. I have an upcoming appointment with the county. I'm working with Ruben Imperial regarding the next steps, um, possibly some support and coordination um to possibly try to get something here in the city. Um, also New Vision Christian Church at eighteen fifty East Hatch Road. Um, I know I've been asking, um, has at least on Wednesdays from two to four P M. Every week they offer food boxes. Um, and they've been having a variety of meats and bread as well for those in need or facing food insecurities. They also have the shower shuttle there on Thursdays, plus hot meals for those who do go. Um, and then I also just kind of want to comment again, I'm gonna, I haven't really heard much, so I'm going to reach out to some of the pastors to try to coordinate the services because I don't think everyone realizes um a lot of the services that we are providing, and hopefully we can kind of address some of the issues that we have that are um addressing our homeless and unsheltered that we have, or those that are facing um some different kind of insecurities, including income insecurities, as I'm hearing, um, some reduced hours and some people at risk of losing their jobs and reduction in forces, and I definitely want to make sure we have a safety net just to kind of help them or um give them just a little help so that where they can get to the next step uh when it comes to resources. And then I know Mr. Casey already talked about the suicide prevention walk this Saturday at nine A M. At Crusade Park. I think we're both going to be there. I look forward, anyone who wants to join, I do have a team already set up on Facebook. If you guys want to come out, I'd love to have you come out and at least walk the park or stand and cheer us on as we walk around the park. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to uh let you guys know that this past week was the League of Cities Expo that myself, the vice mayor and city manager Doug went to. Uh, it was a wonderful event. I appreciate the city manager for spending the entire time uh there, going to different seminars, uh, introducing me to people on the floor that he had known uh from his prior work to some of the contacts that he knew I got to meet. That was a a real good experience. I'm appreciative of that. Then I also wanted to uh just remind people that October fourteenth is the Chambers barbecue event at Smirna Park at George Costa Baseball Fields. Uh, my understanding is that the Chambers currently working on putting a little police versus firefighter softball game together towards the end of the event. Um, so they, I believe that they're working on that. Uh, that should be a good time. I know myself and the vice mayor will be judging, so it's going to be a fun day. Uh, and then also just remind everybody that our community center is going to be doing a trunk or treat event on the twenty eighth, and that's going to be from two to five. Uh, so if you haven't yet registered, if you want to participate, uh, it's always a good time. My family has a blast. It's an amazing event. Uh, and that will be again Saturday, the twenty eighth of October. So that was it, Mr. Mayor.
No problem, and thanks for reminding me. You you're right, I forgot something as well. I guess I will be judging and joining you as well with you. Uh, you actually forgot something else, remember? Okay, let's just make sure we don't forget that.
Public safety. How can I forget? Thank you, you guys, for your recent event at Texas Roadhouse and an amazing lunch. Um, you guys were amazing. You even let me die dance there for a minute. Um, but I heard that there is an upcoming rib eating contest between fire and police. And I just want to make sure I'm on that invite list because I heard uh fire beats the police every year. So I definitely want to make sure I'm there this upcoming year, and I'm sure my fellow council members who are also there with me uh for the last event at Texas Roadhouse would also like to be there to cheer on our police force. If you guys are going, if not, we'll cheer on Modesto Fire. But I'm I'm hoping you guys will be there so we can cheer on Series Police. Thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Casey? Any manager?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Anyone from any of the departments heads? Do we have any comments? You do, sir, Kevin? All right, sir. Make sure that microphone is loud and proud.
Yes, Dean. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to uh let everybody know that the Smirna Park uh improvement project is going to be starting uh this week or early next week. We're just negotiating the schedule. Yes, and uh last week we received bids for the Ochoa Park uh renovation, and we'll be processing that information and confirming all the formalities, and I will be bringing that to council on, I think, the second meeting in October. So we're moving ahead on both our park projects, and I just wanted to let everybody in the audience as well as uh up there on the internet to know that we will be uh working on Smirna Park. And be careful uh for uh, you know, the construction activities that are going on. But the rest of the park will be open, and we're going to probably uh provide uh through the newspaper uh a line of where the temporary fences will be outlined or so the public can see that, and I believe that's going to be published tomorrow.
And speaking of public outreach, uh, Doug, we had talked about this in the past about making sure that we have signs out there that are showing and demonstrating the hard work that we have put together, the design and the process. And I know we talked about that with Smirna Park, Germa Park, and also C Y B. So if if that hasn't been done yet, then I guess we have, we have to take care of that. So and and I just wanted to make sure that the council, which I probably didn't bring it up before because of the Brown's Act, if everybody's okay with that.
I'm I'm just wondering if it's going to be posted online so we can share and inform our voters because the newspaper doesn't always go to every home. So I just want to make sure that everyone that doesn't read the newspaper is informed one way or another.
So whether it be, whether it be a flyer that we could?
The map is on the website and it will be in the newspaper. Both, and and it's in the recreation uh Facebook page, so we have it in three different places.
Actually, I seen it on the Facebook page.
Yeah, and we're trying to keep the public informed, but we also want to make it clear that all the uh uh different uh facilities outside the project area are still open for business, including the softball fields or the
So who who has a copy of that that actual flyer? Is that Parks and Recs?
The engineering department has a copy of that.
Can you guys email to the entire city council, please?
Yes, no problem.
And from here on out, if you guys get any flyers, just email them to us. We can, we have all, we all have social media platforms.
Yes.
And we we just want to help you guys out.
You're good.
I love to repost all the time. So just going back to the signs, Doug, about how it's important for when people to go out there and they see the actual designs that we're doing and make sure Rosa Linda gets that email.
I'll take care of it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Well, thank you very much for that. I appreciate you bringing that up. Oh, and last but not least, I think that a council member Martinez had mentioned that will be a groundbreaking for all these projects or no?
Due to the um the really uh aggressive schedule, it's a federal grant that that we will lose if we don't get it together. So I believe that the groundbreaking would be uh best served as a ribbon cutting at the end of the project. I think it makes more sense to, if we can just get this rolling.
Sure.
I can do a groundbreaking for Ochoa. I have plenty of time. There's no time limit. But I'm really under under the gun for uh starting this project, so if you bear with me and we'll do a a ribbon cutting, I'd be happy to organize that.
Sure, sounds like a good idea. Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else besides Kevin? Sam, do you have something to say?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I just want to bring to your attention tonight that uh our pump work department, the admin building, we do receive at least about between twenty twenty five calls for city for uh tree service throughout the city. Uh, this has been going on for quite some time. Uh, we did budget for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, a hundred twenty five thousand to do to maintenance on the trees. We are, uh, to to date, we are, we used seventy four percent of that budget. So I did ask staff to stop taking requests for any tree service because I need some of the funding uh for uh upcoming uh storm, upcoming winter. So um I I can't, I can't utilize the entire fund just to, so I could accommodate the request that uh is getting, you know, through our department here on a daily daily basis. So if there's a, if there's a concern, I've been, I've been asking staff to go ahead and just let the residents know that, uh, you know, we're out of funds and we can't, we can't take any more requests.
Unless it's an emergency, right? If there's a?
If it's, if it's an emergency, if the tree's falling, or there's an issue structurally that uh it's a safety issue, uh, then 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 we would have to go and and address it. But at this point, we're trying, I'm trying to save the budget as much as I can because of the upcoming winter. And uh if we had one like we did last year, we might lose some trees here and there. I just want to have the funds to support that.
I'm okay with that, council. A good idea. Rosa Linda?
Sounds like we might need a something on a future agenda since we have about ten thousand dollars in ARPA funds that we might be able to use for landscaping.
She pulled that card.
I I'll take any, any, any funds.
She pulled that card. Love it, Rosa. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, anybody else have any comments? Okay. Okay, now this meeting is now adjourned. We will now move on. Actually, I know the county supervisor is not online because Zoom is closed now. Uh, public, uh, excuse me, we are now adjourning for a public employment for California Government Code, section five, four, nine, five, seven, titled to city manager. Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.
Please open that up for public comment.
Yes, is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Have a great night. See you none. Thank you very much. Have a great night.